We'll start the night off with prayer and pledge. Councilmember Ball, can you lead us in prayer?
Just a second. Everybody would like to pray with us, please bow your head. In the name of God, the most gracious, the most merciful, those who we seek for your guidance. We ask you to look over the city council today and keep an eye over all the people that work for the city and especially the administrators so they're the ones can put out good order, business for our people. And please, Lord, please look out for our citizens and please help them to do the right thing to make our city a shining example for the state of Michigan. Thank you.
I'll lead the pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance is to the ladder of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, call Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Astash.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present.
You have all members present.
This is a public meeting, a city council. The audience is asked, is asked to be quiet and to be clearly. Please don't interrupt, boo or clap when individuals are talking. And thank you, councilperson, whoever that was. I need all phone silence, please. All devices silent. Audience, I ask that you do the same thing, that you silence all electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, I have a.
You have any announcements?
I do, I have a couple this evening. The first is the city's waste convenience station will be opened this Saturday, October 14th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. City residents can drop off items not picked up at the curb and any other miscellaneous bulky items. Also, the second annual We Love Saginaw Businesses trunk or treat event is Thursday, October 26th, from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. in the Public Works parking lot across from City Hall. The event is free to the public and will feature a kid's zone and a touch a truck area. Business owners wishing to register for a vendor spot to pass out candy from their decorated vehicle may do so at www.saginaw-mi.com/ trunkortreat. And that takes us to public hearings.
The purpose of the public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for council to hear the comments from speakers regarding a specific action being requested. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please state your name and say if you are in support or opposition of the subject matter for the public hearing. The main speaker, who is the designated speaker, will have, will have 10 minutes. Any additional speakers have three minutes. If there are no questions, that should be directed to council members. This is not a question and answer period. This is a public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Our first public hearing is regarding the proposed urban cooperation agreement with Frankenlass Township to provide water services.
Do we have a representative here?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
My green ear, I'm your public work, your water and wastewater treatment.
Mike, hold on one second.
Oh, I am not, I need 10 minutes.
This was supposed to be 10 minutes and it's 10 seconds.
That's gonna be too short.
Keep it short. We're gonna go back to three and I'll just catch you up.
That should be plenty. So, good evening, commission. Council, excuse me. My green ear, I'm gonna run your water and wastewater utilities, treatment plants, what you have before you and what this hearing is on is the urban cooperation agreement with Frankenlass Township. And what this does is it allows us, or gives us an incentive to supply Frankenlass Township with water, like we do our 15 other wholesale customer communities. What the cooperation agreement does is allow them to repay us for the good work that the people of Saginaw did by 100 years ago building a nice big water plant. So, we have capacity, we have water to sell. What these agreements do, there's two of them, allow us to go ahead and charge Frankenlass for the development that would incur on their, in their township. And then the urban cooperation agreement lays out the fees for that. These are fees, these are not rates. Rate is handled in a different document. And there'll be two public hearings on this, so this will cover the first one.
Thank you. Do we have any more? Anyone else who'd like to speak on this public hearing? Do we have anyone else who would like to speak on this public hearing? Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on this public hearing? I need a motion to close.
Is that closing the council right now?
No.
I don't understand how that works. I'm sorry.
I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our second public hearing is regarding the agreement for conditional transfer of property with Frankenlass Township.
Do we have anyone here? Okay.
Why there two, I don't know, but that's what they are. So, what this does is it's a 425 agreement. It's locked in the state of Michigan. What this allows us to do with Frankenlass Township is tax catcher. So, their properties are virtually transferred to the city of Saginaw. And for businesses that have more than 10 employees, we get to go ahead and we're able to charge them income tax. And again, what that does is it rewards the people of Saginaw for the work that they've already done. And if there's any development out of city, that some of that money is coming back to us.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this public hearing? Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this public hearing? Final time. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this hearing? I need a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to public input.
Speakers, speak clearly and remain courteous and respectful. When approaching, when approaching, when approaching the podium, I'm sorry, please get in all of what you need to say in the last few minutes. The clerk will call you up. You will have three minutes to present. This, again, is not a question and answer period for city council. We will refer to the necessary department and we will make sure that it gets there. Again, please be courteous. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Johnny DePratt.
Hello.
Hi.
Okay, I am here to address the city in regards to the, I think it's 151, 1333 ordinance of the non-occupancy. It's a little part in there that I think needs to be addressed in the, in regards to the late fee. If a resident or homeowner is there to pay in February, when it is due, the city should not have the control to pick and choose of where their money needs to go if they have a rubbish bill or, or a tax bill because those two departments you can work out, make payments arrangements. However, this fee has 100% late fee. So, it's nothing that you can do. And it just build if you have, if you owe a bill in another department, that they all work separately. Now, a lot of residents will serve September 7th with three years of bills because of COVID. And individuals that own homes inside of the city, they were unable to do things with their house. They had, they had tenants in there, cuny victim. They were lost, they were left with tremendous water bills because water was, waters was not being shown off during this pandemic. So, it's pretty much unfair to the homeowners in the city with that, with that one word. You cannot pay if you owe. If they take that out, if you're there in a timeframe in February to pay on time, the city should allow you to pay, no matter what other business you have with the other entities. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone from the necessary department should be getting with you.
Okay, and also, I was, they, the city told me to take it to court. I did, in front of Judge Terry Clark. So, myself and other homeowners, we have to respond to him promptly on what the next move. He advised me to take it up with the city of, the council members. So, it's timely on me to respond to the Saginaw County Court.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Alberto Tenneyuki.
Good evening, council. My name is Alberto Tenneyuki. Also a commissioner on CPAC, representing the Mexican-American council. And I also have a parents group on anti-bullying. I came because I wanted to thank the council, city manager, for the proclamation he gave me, gave us for bullying awareness this month. I hope I, we can continue to get your support every year. I hope this becomes not just October, but every month. You know, because we have a lot of kids that are in the schools that are being bullied. Well, I don't know if I should say a lot. To me, it's a lot, but we got one out of five and that's way too many to me. When you look at it, 20, 25% of these kids being bullied, these are kids that can't go to school because they're scared. These are kids that make up excuses not to go to school. Sometimes these kids, when they go to fight back, they end up being double victimized because then they become the bad guy because they're not listened to in the beginning. You know, some of these situations have come down to school shootings. You know, and I know we don't want that in our community. So, I hope the council continues to support bullying awareness, not just this year, but every year. You know, I plan on getting with, trying to get with Senator Peters to see if we can see things start shaking the gate over down in Lansing there. You know, because something has to be done with this. You know, we talk about mental issues going around in our community. These kids have a lot of mental issues. You know, it's one thing for adults to be bullied, but we're older. You know, we know how to handle ourselves. With these kids, it, it sets in their mind. And then it goes on to, on with them, some of them, you know, to adulthood. Some of them go into self-harm. You know, where that follows them into adulthood. Some of them get suicidal. And ours, and our, you know, are successful at it, which is a sad thing to see. You know, but we need to stay aware of this bullying situation because it's just as bad as the opiate epidemic and everything else going on out there. And these kids need to be able to go to school and smile, not go to school and be sad, not looking for excuses not to go to school. But again, I'd like to thank yous on behalf of myself and the Mexican-American council. We want to try to educate parents on what their rights are, what they can do and what to look for. I see my time's running out. And again, thank you all.
You're so welcome.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Craig Beerline.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name's Craig Beerline. I was in the Marine Corps. Been gone for 40 years. I was born here in Saginaw. And I bought a house, I, I bought a house and I came to Saginaw because how much I loved it. And the next thing I do, I look out the window and the trees are over the top of my house that I just bought and I'm trying to fix up. That was pretty ratty. And I called the city. They tell me they come out the next day. They say, sure, we'll cut the tree down, but it might be two years from now. So, then I go back every month to talk to them and try to hope they, they, you know, go cut down the tree. And then I kind of got in a little argument with them about it because the, the ground, not the ground, but the sidewalk, it comes up where the roots of the tree are. And my wife tripped. Oh, my goodness. As soon as I said that, I started getting letters in the mail. I gotta pay for 15 little squares of cement that the city says is, is bad. And it's, some of it's just a little corner. And then I found out from my neighbors, because I go start and to walk around and say, hey, is this true? My, my, my neighbor tells me the city was driving up and down on the sidewalk when they were putting the meters in the house. I didn't live here then. I can't say, but I got, I got neighbors that will tell you it's the truth. And I just can't pay that amount of money. My wife, she's from Japan, 40 years of marriage. She goes with me everywhere. She couldn't come here tonight because how bad she feels and thinks about the city. She thinks we got robbed. We moved to here to get robbed by the city. Ain't no gangsters robbing me. The city robbing me. You guys gotta fix it, please. Because I can't afford it. And that lady that was in front of me in the, and it was an African-American lady who was in front of me at the, the water, water thing. And I heard her saying, I can't afford it. I can't afford it. And she, I heard her talk about the same thing. And that, I'm a Marine. I went, I went into action. And I went all the way upstairs and know what happened to me? I got a $4,000 bill. Trying to help a lady and trying to see why the city has such a nonsense ordinance that must have been around 100 years ago when people had money and people were running, running tracks and doing stuff and having horse races around here. People ain't got that kind of money to put $4,000 into their own, the sidewalk that the city says they own, but you can't dig it up and make a, a nice piece of grass and maybe a rubber mat.
Okay, so I need you to wrap it up.
But anyway, thank you for my time.
Thank you, sir.
And I really wish, I really hope you guys think about it and maybe you can help us out.
Don't forget your walker.
I do that all the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Our next speaker is Shatoris Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just to piggyback what he said, that wasn't initially why I came up here. I had the same incident where the trees are raising up the sidewalk. My grandson fell, had to be rushed to the hospital and get stitches. I was given, I complained and I was also given a bill saying, hey, you have to pay for your sidewalk because your trees lifted up the sidewalk. That is an issue within the city and it should be addressed because as residents, we shouldn't have to pay for the city's property. Because like he said, you say it's your property. We should, we're just asking for you to take care of your property. But to get back to what I really came to talk about was when I went down for, to pay my water bill, we are paying back sewer charges. My new amount, $4, but when you get a couple thousand people, that's a lot of money. And I was reading that the grant money that you received was for you to repair the sewers. And as a resident, I'm just asking, where did that money go to? Did it repair the sewers? Because we're paying back in our bill, a small portion. Some, one time I had a $30 charge. Couple times I had a $4 charge, but we're paying it. And you got grant money for it. Federal grant money for, to repair the plumbing. And then also, what I wanted to speak about was that me being fairly young, kind of old a little bit, but fairly young, I would like to work in the city. But most of the positions are filled by people that do not live in the city. Why do we pay our taxes? And the people that, from my understanding, that majority of the people that work for the city don't live in the city. Basically, it should be a ballot on saying that, hey, if you work for the city, you should live in the city. You'll help beautify the city. You'll give revenue to the city. And also, it'll be more homes that people will inhabit. So, it won't look so black. It won't just look horrible within our city. Our city is beautiful. We love our cities. That's why we're still here. But if, you know, that could just be tossed out there that we're residents, we shouldn't have to go to Flint Bay City. Here, we shouldn't have to drive away to get jobs that's here because the people come from other places to get our jobs. That's kind of ridiculous. And also, even with the police force, make them come back into the city. We say our crime rate is so high. We tell the federal government, our, our rates are so high. Give me money, give me money. But if we had the police in our community, it would stop all that. And then they would bring their money and beautify our city again. And that's what we want. That's what we want, beautifying our city. And then for the parks, open the parks up. Clean the parks up for our children. Our children want to play too. We don't, shouldn't have to go to the township. More I wanted to say, but next time I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Agnes Johnson.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
To the mayor and other dignitaries. I'm Agnes Johnson. I, my address is 720 Congress Avenue, 48602. I am a retired person. I retired from the Saginaw County Juvenile Detention as a youth care specialist. Got to work in 20 years and the union steward. So, after retiring, I still worked in my community. I remain active. I became a, the state certified mediator. And I became the regional representative for the 14 district and advocate for AARP. I even served at the Saginaw Downtown Lions Club's president. So, I've been busy. But my reason for being here is that, to ask you the question, what can we do to get more late night patrols in our neighborhood and community period, especially on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, late nights? There has been peeping tom, well, for lack of a better word, a peeping tom, visiting my property, especially late nights. He makes known, make me know that he's there by knocking on my walls and spraying foul odors. And I would appreciate any assistance that could be given to me at this time or anytime. I'd appreciate it. Thank you so very much for listening to me, Agnes Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ola McMillan.
Mayor Moore, councilmembers, city staff, citizens of the city of Saginaw, good evening. My name is Ola McMillan and I'm a fourth grade teacher for the city of Saginaw Public Schools. This evening, I would like to talk to you about an important aspect of education that often goes unnoticed but plays a pivotal role in the shaping of the future of our society, the role of the community in supporting our teachers. It is a well-known fact that teachers are the backbone of our education system. They dedicate their lives to empowering knowledge, nurturing young minds and preparing the next generation for success. However, it is essential to recognize that teachers can't do it all alone. The I Read, I Lead, I Succeed Literacy Project is a shining example of how communities can come together to assist our educators and make a tangible difference in the lives of our students. This project has made a profound impact on my students as well as, after teachers and students return, I'm sorry, profound on my students, especially during the COVID pandemic, as well as after teachers and students return face to face. The program has motivated, motivated my students to become fluent readers, which in turn increased their literacy rates and test scores. I believe it can do the same for students across our community and beyond. Daily, I watched my students in the past struggle with reading and writing. And this had made a terrific difference. The I Read, I Lead, I Succeed Literacy Project recognizes that literacy is the foundation upon which all the learning is built by promoting reading and providing resources like books, tutoring and mentorship. This initiative empowers teachers and students alike. It acknowledges that a strong partnership between schools and the community can bridge gaps, inspire a love for learning and ultimately lead to success. When you support our teachers and families, you are investing in the future of our children and our community. We are nurturing a generation of critical thinkers, problem solvers and responsible citizens. The impact of such initiatives goes beyond the classroom as it helps shape a brighter future for us all. In conclusion, it is crucial for us to recognize that teachers can't do it all alone. We need your support. And the I Read, I Lead, I Succeed Literacy Project is a beaming example of how the community can come together to make a difference. This concludes my comments. Mayor Moore, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Dr. Gwendolyn Thompson-McMillan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, city council and everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. I'd like to share a story this evening. There was a group of adults working near a river when someone noticed a child floating downstream. A woman ran to the river, jumped in the water and rescued the child. Over the next several days, more children were found floating downstream. Folks kept jumping in and trying to keep them from drowning. Eventually, there was a constant stream of children floating downstream. And although the whole village was involved in the many tasks of rescue work, they could only pull some of them out of the water. They were unable to save them all. The villagers felt they were doing well to save as many as they did, but they were getting very tired. Suddenly, a couple of the villagers took off and started jogging up the shoreline. Some of the villagers got angry and yelled, hey, where are you going? We need more help down here. It's time for you to jump into the water and save some of the children. The two villagers looked back, yelled and said, we're going upstream to see what's going on. We're gonna stop the children from falling into the water in the first place. You have funded many wonderful programs that meet the various needs of children and families in our Saginaw community. Now, we're asking you to fund the Read, Lead, Succeed Literacy Program because we want to prevent our Saginaw children from drowning by preventing them from falling into the water in the first place. Without the ability to read, our children can't become productive voting citizens. They won't have a chance to become teachers, preachers, engineers, entrepreneurs, firemen, policemen, city managers, mayors or members of a city council. Let's work together. Help us run upstream to save our children.[1716.66] Help us run upstream to save our children. Even if they fall into troubled waters because all of us have made mistakes, they'll be able to read, write, speak, and think well enough to swim. Please fund the Read, Lead, Succeed Literacy Program. Let's come together as a community to prevent our children from falling into the perilous waters of illiteracy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Mayor, that takes us to council remarks.
Councilmembers, you have three minutes as well. You will be timed as well. We will start tonight with Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. First of all, I'd like to give a birthday shout-out to Mama Bee. Today's her 70th birthday, and she's also a great cook. Um, and also this Thursday, my grandson will be celebrating his first birthday, Emiliano Ricardo Ramirez. So we will be celebrating that at the Children's Museum. So I'm excited to see the new layout for that, and he's gonna be the big one, so exciting. And Grandma loves you. And then, um, just some community alerts. This Thursday, trunk or treat, because that's kind of the new thing nowadays, um, instead of going into the neighborhoods, kind of one-stop-and-shop. Trunk or treat this Thursday, October 12, from 4:00 to 8:00 at Garber on Grasshut, uh, 8800 Grasshut Road, Saginaw Michigan, 48609. Also, there's another trunk or treat that my friend is hosting in memory of her husband, Roz Mar- Marsalis Jr., trunk or treat car show, October 13th, this Friday at 5:00. And they are gonna be providing, um, hot dogs and chips and stuff for the kids. So go on out if you have a chance to stop. It's at Gauze on 4756 Dixie Highway. And then also, um, every Tuesday, No Beginnings Church at 7:01 Hess Avenue, 48601, Mi Casa Su Casa. They have clothing and food, um, every Tuesday starting at 4:00. So if you have a chance to step on by, they're doing great things in our community, and I know they're gonna be hosting, um, uh, Harvest Festival soon as well. And so I'll just keep you posted at the next one, but that's pretty much all I have to say tonight. And just remember to be kind in this cruel world that we do live in at times, you know, um, just, you never know what somebody's going through, so just make sure that you're listening near for them because you might be their last resort or hope that they have. So just continue to be kind because, like I said, we just don't know. And especially with bullying, it's a great topic. With the kids back in school, you know, we just need to have talks with our children because at the end of the day, we have to protect our children just as well as everybody else that's helping raise them in the schools. So thanks for the Mexican-American Council coming out. Bobby, of course, always coming and representing for the Mexican-American Council, and just have a good night.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, happy first birthday to your grandson. That's a big one. Uh, my son Elliot had a birthday party at the museum, so it's a pretty good, uh, pretty good party. Uh, so, welcome, Saginaw. Uh, thank you for all the public speakers. There was a lot that was discussed. Uh, Happy Indigenous Day or Columbus Day, whatever one you would like to celebrate. Um, first, when it comes to the public speakers, we had a lot of folks that had a lot of different issues that are either individually important or, you know, community, in terms of a community important, right? So, uh, for the bullying proclamation, thank you so much for the other council leadership that got that pushed through. Uh, thank you, Alberto, for always working on bullying. Uh, I know that Councilwoman Lamarra Silva has always been an advocate that, um, works together with you real well. Um, so thank you for that. And then also, uh, Mr. Barialine, Mr. Barialine, thank you for your service. Uh, and then also, I'll be interested in see what ordinance, uh, is being cited, and then if there's anything that we can take a look at there. And then, when you have a Marine and a union steward there, uh, and public speaking at the same time, you know it's a serious deal. So also hopefully we can get some more patrol over if there is a peeping tom, um, that is, uh, in the area. So, real quick, the Mexican-American Council has changed their Free Art Class Day to October 29th, which is also my son's birthday, from 3:00 PM until 8:00 PM. So there's 100 spots available, and they're gonna be decorating sugar skulls. So please, uh, contact 989-295-9757 if you'd like to get, uh, one of the spots there. And then last, if anybody has any information on the following untold murders, so Keishon Banks, Kwan Lee, Quay Smithers, Mario Bulger, Pamela Whitson, Ryan Clemmons, Cortez Hampton, Massey Reddison, Jonathan Lamar Van, and then there was also another, uh, sev- 65-year-old that was shot, um, on Saturday. So please call Crime Stoppers at 1-800-422-5245. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening. Thank you to all of our public speakers. Um, I am looking forward to hearing from our city staff. I'm allowed to share this evening, and I'm looking forward to our report from our city staff on how we'll be able to move forward to support our residents. So thank you again, uh, for spending your time this evening and sharing your heart with us. Please know that we hear you intently. Once again, also, I would like to say Happy Indigenous People Day. Um, it was a great day to see the installation at Ojibwe Island, um, honoring the historic and the tribes that were from this region. Um, and, um, I understand it was called a powwow, so I'm putting two and two together now, um, to experience that, uh, with the indigenous people as well as the residents of the City of Saginaw. And at one point, we did a unity dance where we all came, I believe his name was Mr. Rob. I think he was saying Mr. Rob. Um, we just came together, um, just, it was a blessing and an honor just to see the culture, to learn the lessons. Um, I encourage everyone, it's right across the street, we walk from City Hall to go there, um, but stop by Ojibwe Island, um, and a great thank you to the Marshall Frederick Museum, as well as the committee that worked hard in putting this installation together, and for the donation to the City of Saginaw. Um, once again, as always, thank you for everything that has been shared. Um, it is, please turn, check on your seniors. It is getting cold out. Um, I was debating to turn on my heat, and my wife says she's debating no more, and she turned it on. So I'm preparing my coins now for consumers, but, um, please check, make sure to check on your, um, check on your neighbors, check on the young people, and thank you again to all those who spend their evening sharing their hearts with the community. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say thank you very much to all of our speakers this evening. I'd like to, uh, thank everyone, uh, that came and, uh, decided to spend some of your time with, uh, Saginaw City Council. Um, I also like to say, uh, that, uh, myself as a city councilwoman, I've visited, uh, many, uh, churches that have youth programs. I've visited many youth programs. I spoke to, uh, many, uh, CEOs, uh, in regards to their youth programs. I spoke to Dr. McMillan, some of her staff, some of the youth, um, through the city. I know I've missed some. And, uh, we, uh, our committee, uh, that, uh, works with, uh, the youth dollars, we will be going back to the table in regards to the youth dollars. So, uh, actually, I'm asking you to keep us in your prayers, that we will go back to the drawing board and making, uh, good decisions. It, it's not easy. It's not easy. We've had some hard decisions, uh, you know, dispersing those dollars, you know? We've done the best we've can, we could, and so we're going back to the drawing board to make some more decisions. So thank you all very much, uh, you know, for, uh, coming to Saginaw City Council. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank all of our public speakers for coming out and for everyone that's tuning in, uh, to see how we handle city business. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Balls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I was just thinking when she was, uh, talking about the children, you know, going down the stream and, you know, uh, drowning, dying, uh, you know, when I think about what would God ask us if we all stood before him? What would we say about what we did for our children that we know he would help? You know, I think about that a lot, uh, because, uh, our future is in the kids, and if we don't raise them up, how can we expect them to be productive members of society? I want to commend you guys for the program, the Read, the Lead Program, because our kids need it. I engage kids all the time. I, I don't know, uh, my wife calls me a big softy when it come to my grandkids, but I am what I am because I know that if we don't instill something in them, what they're gonna be doing is not, may not be nice. Because I know that association brings about assimilation. I don't care who you hanging with. If I hang around Mr. Carwatt for a week or two every day, I'll probably be all buffed up like he is. Drink a beer every weekend or something like that. And I'm not picking on him, but I'm just saying, I know association brings about a si-. Look at the, the kids, what the climate is going on in the City of Saginaw, where no fathers are at home with the kids. Somebody gotta step up to the plate and do what Ms. McMillan is doing in our community, and that is engage in our kids. Because a lot of time, they just wanna be engaged. That's all they want. It's somebody to talk to them. If ain't no fathers at home, it's up to us to do that. That's why I always come and talk about getting involved in programs like the Big Brothers and Sisters Program or mentoring programs, because I know that it'll help us out. So hopefully, when we do meet again, we will try to get these dollars into agencies that we know that have proven track record on saving our kids. Uh, I always think about the, uh, community centers. Uh, when the community centers died, unfortunately, our kids died more. They had no mentors there. I remember as a kid going to the community centers, and it was always somebody, Ernie Thompson or, uh, Jesse Daly, somebody that would always pull it to the side and give us a nugget, a nugget as in a golden nugget to, the way to act, or the way to act as a child or a young man or something like that. And as I got older, I can remember myself being in situations, and I can hear these guys talking to me, and they were nowhere around. I'll be getting ready to do something, and all of a sudden, I can hear Mr. Jesse's voice, "Michael, don't do that," or "do this." I would straighten up and fly right, but now that we don't have community centers, the kids don't have those voices no more. So hopefully, we will get this money into places that we know is gonna help our kids out, you know, and that's what we need to do with all organizations in the city. We have so many people that wanna do things for our children, and we hope that these offered dollars can get into the hands of those people that's doing the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Ostache.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, welcome, everybody, and thanks for coming out tonight on a chilly fall night to the chamber and, uh, everybody watching at home, thanks. Um, just a couple of things, there was a lot here, like Councilman Flores said, that was said tonight, so without reiterating a lot of what has been said already, I do support what they are, what they are saying. I do want to, uh, a couple notes that I was jotting down here to Alberto, you know, if you're still here. Uh, I resonated, uh, very well with what you were saying. Um, bullying is something that I wish that we had zero tolerance for, and I hope that they're treating it that way. I too was bullied when I was a kid because I didn't fit in, and I wasn't like the rest of them. So, uh, even in high school, we had a lot of things where people were being slammed in the lockers and that, and it does, it creates a very intimidating environment and in some unsafe environment, and something that you don't wanna commit. So thank you for coming and sharing, and I'm glad that we could do that proclamation, and I was glad to have my name on it. Ms. Jackson, uh, I was really listening intently to everything that you were saying. I would love to talk to you afterwards or even at your own convenience. Um, you mentioned the water bill. There is a line item on there, yes, it's for the lead and copper rule. Uh, that was something that was passed under the Snyder administration, and it was unfunded, so every municipality unfortunately is having to pay for that. So the City of Saginaw had to figure out a way to replace those, like, copper, uh, lines. And there were some monies that did come in from the American Rescue Plan. Um, part of that process was, um, lost revenue, so the city had to calculate that as well. We are doing some infrastructure upgrades with that money, uh, much-needed infrastructure upgrades to the city, uh, hall and different things. So again, I would love to talk to you about that. Thanks for coming out and sharing your, your thoughts. Agnes, too, uh, I hope that our police officers are able to address that. I'm glad that they heard you tonight, so, um, it's a good thing. And then of anybody that's watching, please call 911 and report these items as well so that they can get the, on their roll call, and the officers that are out at night can be aware of what's going on in our city. Dr. Thompson-McMillan, thank you, and, uh, Ola, for coming out and sharing some of those stories. That was a great story that you, uh, told us, and you're right, reading is really important for kids, uh, especially with my nieces, watching them grow up, and their dad would read to them every night, and I can see exactly what that did for now that, now that they are off in college and, and what it did for them in school. Just a couple of things I'd like to talk about personally. I, I just recently ran across this gentleman, and he's doing things, and he actually owns a lawn service. Uh, his name is Spencer, and, uh, the lawn service is S.B. Mowing, but, um, I'm now following him on Snapchat, Instagram, Facebook, and YouTube. And this guy, he'll take, uh, time out of his week to pick a lawn or two in the city, and he is mowing it free of charge. So, uh, thank you for everything that you're doing. There's been others that have done that in the city as well, but it's definitely appreciated, and I know the neighbors are appreciating it too, but... (bell rings) And their funny videos.
Next, we have Mayor Pro Tem, Ben.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, good evening to everyone, and thank you all for being here. Um, I just wanna echo some of the things that have already been said, I suppose, but Mr. Tenneyuki and to the Mac Center, thank you for the work that you're doing around bullying. Um, I have teenage children that I have tried very hard to raise to be kind and sensitive individuals, but with high schoolers, you see it all the time, kids are, it is a serious issue. And I think it's, um, fitting that we hear from the, the ladies McMillan, um, tonight because getting to these kids and spending these dollars in a, in a good way, um, you have these kids who are just lashing out at each other so much of the time, and it's because so many of their needs are going unmet. And, um, I've seen it firsthand, and I absolutely co-sign everything that Councilman Balls has said because we have so many kids who are struggling and, um, not having their needs met. And really, there isn't anything wrong with these young people. It's the adults that are failing them, and it is the world that fails them and gets to them and, you know, but there's nothing wrong with them from the get-go, um, if we could just get out of their way and give them what they need. So I completely agree with what you're saying. Uh, Ms. Jackson, I too was listening to what you had to say, and, um, I would agree with, uh, Councilman Ostache. Um, we have like till 2040 to replace all those lead lines, so we had to figure out a way to make sure that it got paid for, and we tried to do it as, with as minimal impact on the citizen as possible, but obviously, that's something that we have to pay for because we don't ever wanna have another Flint situation, which we fortunately never would because we treat our own water, and we have the best professionals and the best water in the state of Michigan. Uh, but we have to keep it that way. So, um, and I would just add too, I, I understand your frustration. We hear from so many people about the residence, the residency, but I will say that it was 1998 that the state legislature passed that, and it has been codified. So there is nothing other than asking nicely or encouraging people the best way we can or creating a city where people want to live for us to force people, we can't do that. Um, I'll also say too, the people that we work with here at the city who don't live here are some of the most wonderful people, and they are so talented, and they are so dedicated to the City of Saginaw. And I can find people on my own street who have lived here all their lives who don't care, you know, nearly as much as they should or nearly as much as we do. Um, so I understand your concern. I, I wish we could increase our population any way possible because this is a wonderful place to live. Um, but I, we appreciate what you had to say. And, uh, I just wanted to say as well, thank you to all of the partners who made everything happen today with our land acknowledgement on Ojibwe. Um, it was a beautiful event, and to be able to celebrate and see some of the tradition and to get to listen to them speak their native language, which is something that people take for granted, like, English is never gonna go out of style, other, people always speak English. Um, you know, a lot of our Native American languages have been lost, and there are tribes that only have a few hundred people left and a few dozen people who speak the language, so wonderful experience to have today. Thank you.
Thank you. The best is last. I'd like to thank all our public speakers. You know, for the last two years, I can honestly say, I can't show grace for the struggles that we do up here. I think that everybody or that we all have one thing in common, the betterment of the city. And for those that don't have it, you hold the power. You hold the power. I'm saying all that to say this. We know that we've got extra money for our, guarantee you, it's gonna be different this time. Because the first time, we were learning. We were learning from our mistakes. Hopefully, we'll get more money into the city. I keep telling you, we just poised for a comeback. Even though it doesn't seem like it, I know we had people who talked about different stuff. Trust me, I had a tree in front of my house, I had to pay to get it, and I know everybody can't afford it. Sometimes, sometimes, we got bit. And if you get with us, maybe we know somebody that can save you some money in doing it. I love my city. I'll do anything for my city. Ms. Johnson, that disturbs me. That truly disturbs me. First of all, she is our mother for the city. She is, if it weren't for her and other seniors, where would we be? I don't know who your neighbors are, but I truly plan to look into that for you. Um, it is, it, you know, it, it is just appalling. We keep saying, "Look out for your neighbors." The Bible says, "Am I my brother's keeper?" And if you're a keeper, then that means you need to keep keeping and start working in your own community. It can't get better if all we do is complain. Thank all of you all for coming. You don't have to come, but you take time out your busy schedule to come and see us. Bullying is a no-no in my book, and I used to be a bully. For those that know me, I was a bully.
True.
And I grew up, and I grew up peanut gallery talking over here in this corner. Uh, but, but God. but God, even a bully can be changed, I'm a living witness. Madam Clerk?
Oh.
I seen the clock before she seen it.
That takes us to reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I, I would also mention that, uh, council, we added, and council did approve a residency stipend in our last contract, so that's something that's worth mentioning, if you live in the city, you do get, I think it's, uh, one percent a year increase in pay if you're a city employee.
They can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think anybody heard him, and they back there said, no, no.
Well, I'll say it again.
Thank you.
We have in our contracts that you have a residency, uh, stipend of one percent if you live in the city, so you get paid one percent more if you're a city resident and you work for the city, as the Mayor Protem said, it is not legal, uh, to require people to live in the city to work for the city, that's, uh, violation of state law, and nobody in the state can do that. So, um, that's something we have, we have talked about and worked with the unions, um, seeing if we can, uh, provide incentives for that. The, um, a few council members did mention the Native American Land Acknowledgement Celebration today, and the, um, installation that was placed on Ajibwe Island, uh, it was a project that we worked on, uh, with Saginaw Valley State University, and the Marshall Frederick Sculpture Museum, and several other organizations, uh, purpose of the marker is to honor the Native American inhabitants who first populated this region, the donation of the marker comes from Saginaw Valley State University, who has worked on this project, uh, for the past three years, along with Marshall M. Frederick Sculpture Museum, the City of Saginaw Arts Bridges Foundation, the Zibwing Center of Anishinaabe Culture and Lifeways, the Saginaw Chipewa Indian Tribe of Michigan, and the Ajibwe Project, so, it's, it is right near the footbridge, uh, it's pretty cool if you check it out, and the, one of the reasons why we, um, wanted to place it there when I talked to SVSU is, ultimately, we do wanna have some additional installations on Ajibwe Island that would go towards educating the public about Native American culture and history, so I think that's a good long-term plan for us, I'd like to have, uh, additional walking areas on that end, um, but, and they, uh, said they were interested in doing that, so hopefully we continue to work with SVSU to add some of those things. It is pretty interesting, it has all of the tribal clans's on one side, and, uh, tells about the history and of those clans's, so maybe we can do more with that in the future. The Saginaw Fire Awards is tomorrow at ten AM, it's at Fire Station One as always, and the city council and the public are invited to the awards and memorial service, so it's a great opportunity to hear about what firefighters, uh, encounter daily, and how they serve the public, and, and what they do day-to-day, and see where they work, um, the, I won't announce it here, but I think there must have been a press release, because there's already been a feature on the firefighter of the year, uh, but come and, uh, meet the firefighters and hear about what the, some of the work they've been doing in the community. And, um, one item that's, 'cause we're in October and we're getting closer, we wanna remind everybody about safety on Halloween, so please make sure your children's costumes are visible to drivers, for kids that are gonna be out trick-or-treating, that's one thing, we always wanna make sure to emphasize, and also, we'll be posting more safety information throughout the month, um, and also, heating, um, is another issue that we've been talking about, and we've seen tragedy happen from when people don't, uh, heat their homes in a way that's safe, so, um, that information can be found, uh, throughout the community as well, and if you are having an issue with heating, uh, please do contact, uh, the city, we do have our furnace program, we have a little bit more money allocated to that, so if we can work on those things, uh, we will try to help people out. So, that concludes the management update.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Do you, I think that was in nineteen ninety-nine, in the city of Michigan, where the, um, you didn't have to live in the city if you worked in the city, is that right?
Uh, let me see.
I think it was nineteen ninety-nine.
Two thousand, oh, nineteen ninety-nine, yeah, you're right, yep.
I'm just saying, 'cause it, it, it does hurt the city, but that's, that's another question, one, that's another, that's another date for another debate, and, and everything else, but, you know, everybody know that what happens when the policemen, the firemen, and, and the people who live out of the city, kids don't get opportunity to see those people that work in this city, uh, you know, live next door to them, or the police next door to them, you know, I stayed in the neighborhood where Reuben Daniel was, and you can imagine how that was, I mean, this guy was a stellar guy in the community, worked for General Motors, and the community center and everything else, I'd be able to walk past his house and talk to him, you know, it was a beautiful thing, but that's another story, so.
Anybody else? Madam Clerk?
We are now at the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been available at City Hall, and on the city web page, and on SG TV Channel one ninety-one, I need a motion to approve the agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Support.
Do we have any exceptions? Beautiful. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
We are now at boards, commission, and committee reports.
Do we have any boards or commission reports?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, the first report that we have is, um, a report on the food insecurity, um, feasibility study, myself and Mayor Protem have been meeting with our, um, consultants, and we're currently at the stage where we have a survey ready to go, um, and we've been working hard, making sure that the survey is represented, uh, our residents are represented, um, we currently have some neighborhood organizations that have committed to opening up their facilities, um, this survey will be provided online, um, and we have some neighborhood partners that have committed to opening up their facilities, to make sure that those who cannot, um, get, get to the computer, they have access, as well as paper copies, will be available to complete here at City Hall. Um, next week, October seventeenth, at the NAG meeting that will be held here at City Hall, the associates in our firm will be meeting with our neighborhood associations, um, to walk through some of the questions, some of the very important questions pertaining to the research that's been completed, and what are really, per, our real purpose in completing this feasibility study, so I'm encouraging everyone, um, if you're part of a neighborhood association, um, please be there, if you're not, and you wanna join, please attend the NAG meeting, um, but our associates will be here doing some one-on-one conversations, um, and facilitating conversation regarding the foods insecurity study. And then the second report I have is, um, last meeting, uh, Manager Morales did share about the work of the committee for our sister city of Monochrome, and I do wanna report that the African Cultural Festival has committed to, um, allowing their organization to be the, um, where we can host our committee, so currently, it was, uh, come, voted on yesterday at their executive board meeting, um, and the committee is called the Emoja Outreach Committee, um, to make it, uh, at large, our one, number one focus right now is our Monochrome-Sister City relationship, but we did leave room, that if we ever go into any sister city relationships with other African countries, that we will be able to facilitate those conversations and those needs through the Emoja Outreach Community, uh, Committee, that is, uh, oversaw by the African Cultural Festival, so I wanted to say thank you to the executive committee of the African Cultural Festival for supporting me in this endeavor, um, and if you are interested, there will be more information coming online for our next, our first official meeting. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Mayor, that takes us to resolutions, our first one on the agenda is to establish the Saginaw County Vote Center at six-eighteen Cass Street as an early voting site for all elections held within the City of Saginaw.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second, support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Our second resolution is to approve the Michigan Department of Transportation Cost Agreement twenty-three dash fifty-three eighty-one for the reconstruction of South Jefferson Avenue from White Avenue to Janes Avenue.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved as second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
We're at miscellaneous business.
Do we have any motions on the floor? No motions on the floor, and don't y'all move, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I should play with y'all, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank everyone so much for coming.